Checking in with Quincy School Committee Vice Chair Anthony Andronico to get an update on the meeting of May 27th, the virtual meeting still, right Anthony?
That's right, yeah, we're still going virtual and I really appreciate you having me on again so we can give an update to everyone at home.
Yeah, it's our pleasure. There is a lot going on from budgets to superintendent searches to graduations. So where should we begin?
Well, I think we start with the budget. As you mentioned, we do have a lot going on, but that doesn't mean we have to settle down. We have to get to everything. So I think we'll start with the budget. I know the superintendent's leadership team presented at last night's school committee meeting for an overall budget of $117 million and some change from there on out. That does represent an increase of almost $2 million from last year. Essentially, the mayor's appropriation is for this year $111 million. We have projected circuit breaker funding from the state which reimburses costs actually for the last year of $5.2 million and then an additional million from the federal government from the CARES Act related to COVID-19 expenses. So that's sort of the projected budget. But as I think you know, Joe, the net school spending for the city of Quincy is actually much higher, the city side, and thanks to Mayor Koch, you know, takes care of some facilities issues and some other costs that QPS incurs. So net school spending is actually projected to be around $170 million for the next year. I know Quincy puts a great focus on our public education and that's thanks to Mayor Koch and, you know, the appropriations that he and the city council put in. So essentially from last year to this year, with those increases and some projected savings from retirements and things of that nature, the school committee essentially has about $780,000 to work with to supplement the programs we already have in place. So I'm just going to go over a few of the things that were proposed by the leadership team on how to spend that $780,000 that we sort of have to work with. So we're looking at an additional academic classroom teacher to support English language learner students in our high school, one and a half, that's one full-time and a part-time classroom teacher to help us address class size to make sure those are still at acceptable levels. And two literacy teachers for early intervention in math and literacy, two special education teachers for language development in elementary and middle schools, a special education teacher for Orton-Gillingham practices and one for our CARES classrooms, another speech therapist, a guidance staff member to help with social and emotional needs of our students, an IT support position, really for half of the year that will help us with the rollout of Chromebooks for our students and grades, I believe it's five through 12. And those Chromebooks are going to be purchased over the coming weeks, thanks to Mayor Koch and the CARES Act funding that we're receiving, and an additional central office administrator to help the leadership team, you know, as we move forward. I mean, there's going to be somewhat of a vacuum of knowledge leaving because Dr. Christopher Arrows departed for Quincy College. But in addition, anyone that takes over is going to need additional support. And not to mention, we're in the middle of a pandemic and that team in general needs, I'd say, another set of hands regarding, you know, how do we reopen, rolling out Chromebooks and new programs? You know, not to mention that we're still focused on opening a new special education learning center in fall of 2021, and we're going to need someone to help with that as well. So we have just a few things going on with the budget. So I didn't know if you had maybe any questions about that or something I can clarify with it too.
Where would the additional $780,000 come from, Anthony? How does that get allocated?
Yeah, so essentially the way that that's working is it's the support from the mayor. To be very frank, it's that city appropriation. And it also helps that we're getting an additional $1 million from the federal government for the CARES funding. And that's separate from the $2.2 million that the mayor and the city are allocating for those Chromebooks. So those Chromebooks, that funding isn't even coming out of Quincy Public Schools budget, something I alluded to earlier where net school spending is much higher than what the QPS budget is in the city of Quincy. So that's essentially where it comes from, and it also comes from additional savings that we're seeing by the number of teacher retirements that we have. So when you have individuals that are retiring at the highest step level and salary level, you know, when you go and replace those teachers, you know, the next wave is starting at a much lower salary range. So there's savings to be realized there as well. So that's essentially where it comes from. And the superintendent's leadership team, I think, did a great job putting the budget together. One thing that they were mindful of, I think, was to make sure that where we focused were for our high needs students. So English language learners, low income and special education students. So that's what, when we say high needs, that's what we need. That's the technical term that the state uses to define a certain category of individuals. And, you know, we wanted to really focus in on helping that area because we're not sure if the state funding from the Student Opportunity Act is going to come through. And just because it's not coming through doesn't mean that those students don't need that extra support. So that's something that we're focused on in general. And, you know, the coming weeks, I think we're presenting the former Student Out Opportunity Act plans to the public at the citywide PTO meeting, which I believe is June 2nd at 7:00 PM. Further details should come out on that in the coming days. And we're also going to hold our budget hearing for the public to chime in on this proposed budget at our next meeting on Wednesday as well at the beginning, just so folks are aware. You know, the, once we present the budget, it's definitely not end all be all. And we need that public input to make sure that the budget reflects the wants and needs of the community.
So what is the process now? I know that it'll be presented to the city council this going Friday, I believe, and then where does it go from there?
Right, so upon, I guess, approval of the bottom line numbers, at least for Quincy Public Schools, and then the minutia of all the other departments and how they're spending those funds. You know, the city council could approve on Friday, and then really from there, the way it works is the school committee holds their public hearing on Wednesday. We receive feedback. If there's substantive feedback that, you know, it looks like maybe we should adjust or maybe even some members say, hey, maybe I don't want to fund that. I'd rather focus funding elsewhere. The process can really string out for as long or as short as the school committee would like. But as of right now, at the very least, you know, we're going to follow through on those public meetings, get feedback from folks, and then we'll have to vote, voted of our subcommittee, our budget subcommittee, which I chair, and then it'll go to the main school committee to approve there. There isn't a waiting period that needs to take place between the subcommittee and the regular school committee like there is for policy decisions.
Right.
It's entirely plausible that the budget could move through subcommittee and regular meeting in one night. So that's something that can take place. I don't know if it will take place, but that is a possibility as well.
Okay. Are there things that this budget is, will not allow you to do that you had wanted to do?
Well, yeah, that's difficult to say because I don't think we ever really got to a point where we would know what that bottom line number could have been to even work with the numbers, say, oh, this is what we were going to do instead.
Right.
But I would definitely say though, that, you know, if we were more confident or really confident at all that the funding from the state for the Student Opportunity Act was going to come through, which was a total of $6 million. You know, certainly there could have been a more robust plan and additional supports put in place, whether that be in the classroom or outside of the classroom for our students. So there's always more that we can do, but I think with what we have right now, we're pretty focused on essentially level funding is what we're looking at with a couple of things thrown in there is really because of the mayor's appropriation and the CARES Act funding there. So Quincy in general, I feel is in a good place as far as our budget is concerned. The mayor did mention last night that Quincy maintained its bond rating while other communities saw maybe a negative outlook or dip in their bond rating. So we're still in, and I feel a good place. Not to mention that the mayor did say that he's not looking at layoffs or furloughs on the city side and on the school side.
Right.
So that's definitely not the case in other communities. So overall, I'd say we're in good shape.
Okay, very good. On to the next item of discussion?
So we, I think we touched a little bit on the Student Opportunity Act. So as of right now, those plans, the formal plan still does need to be submitted to the state by June 19th. So that's another reason why we're going forward with the public process and receiving input on that plan. And it'll help us with our budget just to make sure that we're going over that. So that's really for the Student Opportunity Act. But the other thing we touched upon was high school graduations. You know, actually, the day that we had our check-in and we recorded our interview last week, that we were looking at maybe a June date, and then later in that same afternoon, the state provided us some guidelines and essentially wiped out any plans. So for anyone that tuned in last week, we're sorry about that.
Yep. It's a fluid situation, as they say.
Right. So, you know, these things always don't go as we'd like, but the state did provide some guidelines that I think will help us overall in ensuring that any in-person graduation that we have is safe and that we go about it the right way. We're following those public health guidelines. So if you'd like to have an in-person graduation, which the school committee has expressed that we do, it needs to be on or after July 19th of this year. So that's essentially what we're looking at. You know, it's not going to be as soon as we would have liked, but, you know, we are going to listen to our public health guidelines on that and shift it out a little later in the summer. And, you know, the mayor talks about his plans with the Commissioner of National Resources at Quincy, Mr. Murphy, and spacing out, you know, students and their families at Veterans Memorial Stadium and figuring out what can be done. So essentially, it looks like there's enough space for students at North Quincy High School to be spaced on the field and to have two members or two invitees per graduate at the stadium spaced out appropriately. Quincy High is in another situation where there's just simply too many graduates. And if we gave two people per graduate, it simply wouldn't work according to the guidelines that we need to adhere to. So it looks like Quincy High will need to have two graduations separated out. We're not entirely certain at this point how that will work. I know the air, the superintendent and principal Tagliari are still working that out. But I think at the end of the day, you know, everyone knows that we need to adhere to the guidelines and that we're doing the best we can according to those guidelines to give these students the best graduation that they can under the circumstances. So that's sort of what we're looking at. And I do want to remind folks again that on June 8th and June 9th on Quincy Access Television, there will be a sort of tribute video for those respective schools on their previously scheduled graduation dates that will air for them. So regardless, you know, they're going to get a memento that other classes simply don't have, which is a shorter video congratulating them on their accomplishments and their graduation. And hopefully, you know, later in the summer, they'll be able to get that in-person graduation that I think everyone deserves as well.
Right. Who knows? That might set a new precedent for future classes, you know, a tribute video plus ceremonies.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, there are a few things throughout this process that I think we've as a school committee even picked up and will have moving forward. A couple of them is the live stream of our meetings on the QA TV website, which I think is fantastic. Personally, I don't have cable, so I have to use the live streams anyway. So I can certainly relate to that.
Great.
And things like having open forum, be able to, you can email the school committee instead of showing up in person to have your comments read before the school committee. So even a couple of things like that, I think, are starting a new tradition and always improving. I think that video tribute for the graduating classes might be one of them.
Sure. And is it still planned on the June 10th meeting to have the superintendent issue a declaration of graduation, if you will?
Yes, yes. On that June 10th school committee meeting, you know, the superintendent will officially say, you know, congratulations to our graduates. Quincy Public Schools formally recognizes you as having been graduated from our school system. I forget exactly what the wording is.
Right, yeah.
He's done it plenty of times.
Right, because some of the, some of the students will need that if they're going, say, to the military or, you know, out of state for higher education or what have you. They'll need that before July 19th for sure.
Right, yeah. We don't want to hold anyone up, so.
So in addition to all of this, you're looking for a new superintendent, Anthony?
We are, yes. Again, I mean, Dr. Christopher Arrows has been absolutely fantastic over the last 20 years. You know, we're sad to see him go, but we're just so appreciative of all the work that he's put in. We wish him all the best of luck at Quincy College. As we like to say, you know, he's graduating with the class of 2020 and finally moving on to college. So congratulations to him. So we'll see how it goes. But yeah, we're looking for a permanent superintendent as we move forward. Mr. Mulley for the time being is the interim superintendent, but we are moving forward with a full search process. And, you know, at our last update, our last check-in, we went over the leadership profile survey and the focus groups that are going out to the community. And actually, you know, today, the day we're recording this interview, that link to the survey should be going out to Quincy Public Schools community and the city of Quincy in general for folks to start responding to that survey. We're setting up focus groups that will supplement the survey so we can really get into some of the things that, you know, that survey just can't, can't dig into or, you know, you can't adequately express in a survey. From June 8th to the 19th is when those focus groups are going to be set up. More to come on when those actually will take place. We're coordinating with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees to facilitate those meetings and for their staff to head it up because we want people to feel comfortable knowing that, you know, their identity is protected and that, you know, no one from QPS or the school committee is sort of watching over them as they give those answers. We need those answers to be genuine.
Sure.
So that's where we're at with the leadership profile and, you know, the focus groups. So that's going on today. But really, the big news out of last night's meeting is that we officially approved a brochure for the position of the superintendent. And essentially what that is, is a job description. And candidates can go and look at, you know, why should I choose Quincy? What qualifications do I need to have? What's the application process like? What qualifications are they looking for? What's the makeup of the school district? What's their budget? What do they spend overall as a city on their schools? And maybe most importantly, what is the timeline like for, you know, for the committee to pick a superintendent? What process would they be agreeing to by applying? So that is being posted on the Mass Association of School Committees website. It's going out to the Superintendent's Association, and we're going to start receiving applications now for the position. So we're pretty excited about it, to be very honest. You know, we're finally in a place where it goes from the school committee now to the search committee. You know, at our last meeting, we approved a 13-member makeup of a search committee that will be responsible for going over the applications we received, selecting semifinalists, interviewing those semifinalists, and then giving the school committee finalists for the school committee to interview in public and then select. So I did just want to go over quickly. I had it here in front of me, you know, some of the members of that search committee. So.
Yeah, please.
Looked them where. So again, just to review the makeup, I'm doing this from memory now. We've got three members of the school committee that are taking part in it, three members of the Quincy Education Association, so teachers from every level, one from elementary, one from middle, and one from high school. We have a member of the nonprofit/business community, and we have three parents that are helping us out, one from the citywide PTO, one from the special education pack, and one from the English Language Learners Pack, a principal, a student, and a member of the leadership team. So that's the makeup. And as of right now, the individuals that are going to be heading that up, Mr. Santoro will be the chair from the school committee. And we're also going to be having Paul Burgoli and Emily Lebo join him on the committee. I apologize, I don't have the names in front of the three teachers from the Quincy Education Association, but I do know that those individuals have been appointed.
Okay.
So thank you to Allison Cox for getting that done and, you know, giving us some quality individuals. I do know I had a conversation with her about that. Mark Papil from the leadership team. We had Mr. Tagliari, the Quincy High principal, who will be joining us. Scott Alessandro from citywide PTO, Cassandra Beck from the special education pack. We also had Jaden Halcy, a student from North Quincy High School, and Philip Chong from Quarry, the Quincy Asian Resources. And then I believe the last one is the English language learner parent. I know we've sent a few communications over to that PTO there, and we're just waiting to confirm the individual. So that's really the last one. But really, from here on out, you know, I've been coordinating with Mass Association of School Committees and Mr. Santoro to get the search committee set up with an orientation meeting so that they can sort of work through the process on how that committee will run and the best ways to do so. And that's really what we'll be doing throughout this process is to listen to the experts, and that's the Mass Association of School Committees because, you know, we want to make sure that we do this right.
Will the search committee be holding individual meetings, Anthony, separate from the full school committee?
Yes. So those meetings are essentially private meetings. They're non-public meetings.
Okay.
Um, you know, as long as there are fewer or less than a majority of school committee members, which there are, then it doesn't need to be a public meeting. And there are a lot of benefits to ensuring the privacy during that time. The main reason being is it protects your applicant pool for the position. Essentially, let's say that the superintendent of Waymouth, just right next door, applied for the superintendentcy of Quincy. I'm pretty sure that they wouldn't want their name to become public unless they were seriously considered as a finalist.
Right.
That they had essentially, you know, turned their back on their community at the time. So that's a situation that you definitely want to avoid. You want candidates to feel comfortable and establish a certain level of trust with the search committee and with the school system overall, if they're looking to even apply here. So that's why it's set up that way. But in the end, you know, the however many candidates the search committee gives to the school committee, all of those interviews are done in public.
Okay.
When you get down to, we have to decide on a final number to give the search committee for finalists. But let's say, you know, four to six or somewhere around there will be interviewed in public, and the public will also have the opportunity to express, you know, how they feel about those interviews by reaching out to us on the school committee. So that's really how it goes. And maybe we just want to touch base on the timeline too.
Please, yeah.
For people to know. So again, that job posting is happening today, which is May 28th, and it'll be open until June 25th at 3:00 PM. But June 25th, 3:00 PM is the deadline for submitting an application. Semifinalists will be selected by the search committee a week later by July 2nd. So we'll have to sort through just the applications, no interviews at that time. So you're just going through saying, well, who should make it to the next sort of cutoff round? And you select your semifinalists, and then July 13th through the 17th will be semifinalist interviews. So that's when the search committee will be actually interviewing those semifinalists and figuring out really, you know, who should make it to that finalist round. And they'll have to make that decision really, but really during that time. And then the next step is July 27th to August 7th, and that's when site visits happen and finalist interviews occur. So that is, that's really when the school committee goes in public, says, here are your finalists. And if it's a site visit essentially, let's say you're superintendent or a principal in another district, normally the school committee, some of the members would go and visit that individual's district and just to see how they run their day-to-day. There is an asterisk in our timeline that that will only occur if public health guidelines dictate that we can do so.
Right.
Parts a little up in the air, but at the very least during that timeframe, finalist interviews will be occurring, and then those will take place in public for everyone to see. And then we'll have to make a decision, and that decision is projected to come down on August 12th from the school committee to enter into negotiations with an individual that we have selected to lead us forward. So that's how essentially it's going to work. The start date of the superintendent, we left as TBD. We put specifically that that date would be negotiated. We did this for a couple of reasons. One, if you have an internal candidate, their transition is going to be a lot easier to slide them in, and maybe they could start right away. If you have someone from outside who is maybe superintendent in another district, they're going to need more than a couple of weeks to get situated and even depart their position.
Right.
You know, we're basically what we're getting at is we're very flexible on the start date, and we'll make accommodations for any individual that we select as a school committee to lead us forward.
Okay. Was a salary set, Anthony, for the position, or how does that work?
So we specifically said that we'll negotiate basically a competitive contract with compensation and benefits depending on the experience level of the individual we select. We did go through a somewhat similar process with the interim superintendent contracts just recently. Basically, just to give people insight into how that worked, we looked at superintendent salaries of comparable districts of size and some of the other districts that the state specifically compares Quincy to regarding size and population makeup of your students and your city overall, and looked at that and used that as a guideline for our offers. And we, I'd expect that we'd follow a similar, a similar guide for the superintendent salary on a permanent position.
Okay, so it sounds like you really have a very clearly defined roadmap now for this process moving forward. And how can the public find out about this?
So I mean, in general, you know, the best way to do so is to go to quincypublicschools.com. Or, you know, if you're curious about what's going on, always, you can always send me an email, anthonyandronico@quincypublicschools.com, or of course, any of my colleagues. Same email format, first name, last name, at quincypublicschools.com. But moving forward, how this is going to work, you know, the brochure will be posted online at the Mass Association of School Committees website, right on their homepage on the superintendent's website, and I would imagine on the Quincy Public Schools website, so people know what the brochure is, what's the timeline like. So that's, that's sort of how it will work. And as we move forward, we're going to continue to provide updates like this, you know, to the public. So we're just trying to get the word out any way we can, and I think people are going to have questions, but we're here to answer them.
Sure. Just briefly, if we can, the education commissioner just earlier this week talked a little bit about fall and getting back to school and the fact that he felt it was important for students to be in the classroom. However, that's where it stopped. There were really no guidelines. The governor really didn't offer any guidelines. I think because people don't know right now. Was it, was it talked about at the meeting at all?
Yeah, we very briefly touched upon actually those comments that he mentioned by Commissioner Riley. So it's actually expected that beginning of next week, the commissioner will issue guidelines on summer programming in the city. the commissioner will issue guidelines on summer programming in the city and, and that can potentially work and what you need to adhere to. And he's, he projected that in mid-June uh, guidelines for reopening your schools will come out.
Okay.
Oh, really in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a better idea of what that might look like. Um, you know, I, I don't always like to project out what those guidelines might be or uh, excuse me, or take um, or, or assume what they might be. So I think even as a committee, we're, we're just going to wait and see now that we know those guidelines are coming out mid-June. I feel uh, comfortable waiting uh, a few more weeks before we officially develop our plans. Um, but one thing that was brought up was uh, to reach out to the community, most likely through another survey. I feel like we're a little survey happy right now. Um, just to see, you know, how remote learning has been going and has went for them.
Yeah.
Adjustments that we can make uh, for the fall if remote learning's still in place or if partial remote learning. Um, you know, we really don't know. And that's another reason why we're just going to wait uh, a little bit. Um, but not too long to see what those guidelines are. Uh, and then get feedback from everyone because uh, you know, our, our parents and our students live it every day. Um, so it's one thing for us to say, this is how it's going to be. Uh, but you know, we need that input.
Sure. I'm sure that the teachers will have a, a, a lot of uh, to offer on that subject as well.
Absolutely. And a lot of our parents too, dealing with uh, remote learning is parents dealing with it is, is. So it's uh, you know, hats off to them. We, we did get an update uh, just on the numbers uh, for engagement. And um, you know, we're, we're up around ninety percent essentially that are using specifically online learning.
Mm-hmm.
Not to mention the hundreds of packets that are handed out each week, uh, physical packets. And we think a lot of those are, are younger students that um, you know, their parents just don't want them sitting in front of a computer screen all day. And I absolutely understand that. So I feel that we're, we're, we're in a good spot and it took us a while to, to get acclimated, but that, that's the same in every district.
That's exactly right. Yeah, it's all new territory. Anything else, uh, we should add today, Anthony?
No, I don't think so. I mean, it was a pretty packed meeting. But we're going to continue to have these updates as we move forward. Um, you know, as you mentioned, on the horizon, we'll have no reopening guidelines and what that's going to look like. Still need to firm up high school graduation. And uh, finalizing a budget, not to mention, you know, uh, a process and an update on our, our superintendent search, which might come down maybe next week or two. But uh, you know, once those deadlines start coming in, uh, we'll, we'll have more to report on.
Very good. Appreciate the updates and um, we'll catch up with you next week.
Sounds good. Thanks, Joe.
All right. Take care.